All right, thank you. Good evening, welcome. Please rise, join us at the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Snowy evening. I think I'll go right to item six. We're here to meet with NORCAMP to hear their annual report to us. Rob, welcome.
All right, do they have any copy of the reports? You guys get the PDF version?
We got it.
Yes, we did.
All right. Excellent.
Could I get a few?
Oh, sure. Certainly, sorry.
Do you have an answer on that?
Sure. Why not?
Yeah, you're very welcome.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, before we proceed any further, I think Mr. Maseri is making a motion to appoint Mr. O'Leary as acting clerk for the evening. Some of them, and I think you've seconded that.
I second that.
You've seconded that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Steve.
No.
All right, sure. I'm gonna kinda keep it abbreviated since you guys have had a chance to familiarize yourselves and the weather's pretty terrible outside, so, um, as always, you try to keep sort of the same levels of goals and try to keep improving upon what we already have. Um, you know, we set goals to increase membership, have greater visibility involvement in schools, generate even more local programming, get more locally-based studio productions, continue our partnerships with the various community organizations, improve and upgrade our equipment, you know, keep working with our cable providers and keep fostering a good working relationship with them, increase our online presence, you know, also archiving some of the older programming, and we actually upload it to YouTube so people can have access regardless of where they're at, then offer streaming media services, and hopefully non-cable subscribers can stay in touch with the town. And our capital plan is more an extended version of that, and to keep upgrading and replacing equipment, keep trying to solve some of the issues that we have, try to get a third channel, so we can actually a real public educational government access facility, upgrade our equipment, and then explore the high-definition and streaming media methods of on-air signals and get these going.
Just in relation to the third channel.
Sure.
Do you think we're maximizing the two that we have?
Oh, yeah. Definitely. Definitely. In the, uh, there is in the, uh, program in segment, they have a sort of a, according to the contract, cable providers would like to see first run locally-produced, non-commercial programming eighty percent of the weekdays for eighty percent of the time during any consecutive four-hour period during four weeks, so that's like sixteen hours, so they wanna see about twelve hours of new programming a week, and we, we do that. We're already like twenty-four point two hours roughly on average, so we pretty much doubled that. It'd be great, this way we could have, you know, especially with the advent of the new school, and I guess they're gonna be putting in the studio and whatnot, it'd be great to really leave that open for them, at least for the nine months of the year that the school's in session, that they can really take ownership of it, and, I won't say necessarily ownership, but take, I don't know, just take the reins and start doing stuff, whether it's covering sports, more school events, especially we have both combined middle school and high school, it's a lot more opportunity, a lot more events to be covered. I think parents would be, you know, a lot more appreciative of what they can see for that product when they're at home, like, hey, there's a talent show, or, hey, there's the winter concert, or, hey, there's a basketball game.
But you're looking for parents or teachers or staff to take on the responsibility to film.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's kinda how we are. We're more, we don't give you the fish, we teach you the fish, as sort of paraphrasing the old proverb there. We provide the equipment and training to get out there, record these programs, come back, edit. If you don't wanna edit, I mean, we can throw it together, it's not too bad for us to do. But, I mean, again, it's just a matter of time, there's not, there's three of us full-time on staff, there's, there's no way just the three of us could cover every single event in town, weekends, nights, the whole nine yards, so that's why we...
Mr. Terros is one person, but transcript, he has a pretty good job in making a rap to everything in town.
That's true. That's true. I won't argue that one.
This is his life.
You're like three times the staff here.
That's true, yeah.
Very sad.
Um, but, uh, with regards to membership, we actually pretty much doubled the amount of members we had from last year to this past year. We had probably still a bit under eighty, I wanna say around seventy-five or seventy-eight in 2012, and we're about a hundred fifty-six members of people that are renewing or signed up. One thing I do with renewals is if you volunteer enough hours, I usually just give it about ten hours, I'll waive your membership renewal fee and just keep you, I mean, what's the point of me charging you something when you're already giving me your time? Why do that? You know? I mean, it's not really our bread and butter is membership, you know, I, I really just fund it through fees from the cable company, so, you know, why not?
Why don't you expound upon the, the value of the membership right now? This is your annual opportunity.
Oh, yeah, it's true. Uh, I mean, if you sort of look at the breakdown, individuals or families can sign up for twenty bucks a year, organizations can sign up for twenty bucks for the first five members, and each additional member's only five more dollars, seniors and students are ten bucks. What that gives you access to is training, equipment, a facility to use, on-air time. Kinda give you a breakdown, we had, last year we had eighty-three individual equipment reservations. If you were to go out and find a commercial entity, rent that equipment from, probably about three hundred dollars a day, would be about a hundred and seventy-four thousand three hundred dollars. We don't charge you anything but a membership fee, or if you volunteer, nothing, you know, so, uh, same thing with editing, I mean, if you were to, you know, we had a hundred forty-eight editing sessions, and if you rented an edit facility or a computer, about two-hundred seventy-five dollars a day, so that's still on the low rent of things, and that's still a hundred twenty-two thousand dollars a year we save folks. On-air time, I mean, to actually get something on the air would cost you thousands of dollars. We don't charge you anything. You just sign up, you take your classes, you make a good program, and as long as it's, falls within the criteria of what's suitable for broadcast, both technically and content-wise, then yeah. Why not? You know? So, I encourage people to get involved. I know the, the students get, uh, get involved, I know, right now we're trying to get youth services back involved again, which is great because they've done the Battle of the Bands every year, uh, the middle schoolers cover things like the talent show there, they were actually doing an after-school program there. We'd worked with the students at the Hood School the end of our last school year, and they, the kids, they did this great little tour from, uh, I think it's JT, that's the name of the cat, they did like a tour from his perspective. That was their project over the course of six weeks, it was awesome. It was just, you know, and it's not impossible to make TV, that's the thing, it's like, you can do it at home now, you buy any average computer, and you buy any, you know, SLR point and shoot, you have the ability to make TV, we just have the next tier-up of equipment, and we just wanna encourage folks to get involved and use it, why not? You know, it's there to be used, it's there to get your message out, whether you wanna talk about recycling, or you just wanna tape a basketball game, you know, so...
Rob, how did you manage to double the number of members?
Uh, well, one was, we ran in...
What did you guys do?
We did Membership Month in October, where we offered free memberships, and then at the Apple Festival, we also, as sort of a, in celebration of the Apple Festival, we offered free memberships, and that right there was almost forty members there. We also had gotten more involved with the schools, so we had the after-school program at the Hood and the middle school program, those students signed up, and I mean, that's, I mean, we had about a two-to-one youth-to-adult ratio of memberships, so you figure out of a hundred fifty-six, maybe there's fifty adults, maybe like a hundred students, maybe even a little bit more, but, yeah. You know, just, just things like that to help encourage people and keep them involved, keep them interested, and just, that's what we wanna do.
Have you done anything with seniors?
Uh, yes, we did a few presentations at the senior center, and, uh, we do record some of their, their presentations, but some of them, they just, they get a little intimidated, so it's trying to, that's a tough, that's a tough demographic to reach out to, because they see tech, I don't wanna generalize, but sometimes they see technology as imposing, and you kinda wanna say, no, no, it's not that bad, you know, it's just hit the red button, point, shoot, go, just make sure you train things nice, don't make it all jittery, you're good, so, you know, again, it's something I'd like to reach out to, I'd love to get more seniors involved. I mean, in past facilities I've worked, I've worked with people as old as ninety years old, and I had one produce, and he was in his late eighties, and he just constantly just recorded things around town, it was awesome. We have a couple seniors actually that are, are involved. One of them does a religious-based program, and it's great, he's dedicated, he shows up every two weeks, drops off two DVDs constantly, and he does all the editing and stuff at his house, he's just a really brilliant man, so, yeah.
No, I, I wasn't referring so much to the seniors at the senior center that you find, but there's a large category of seniors in North Reading.
Right, right.
That don't go to the senior center, and I was just wondering if some effort could be made, that, that may be something that you might get some of that age group to participate in.
That's true. Not seeing them at the senior center, I don't really see them...
At all.
Oh, right, you know, there, I've had a few people walk in, I had one volunteer...
That's why I asked, that's why I asked you how you managed to double the...
Right, it's mainly through youth, a lot of youth outreach.
You might wanna think about ways of reaching that group.
Yeah, that's right, there is a lot of senior populace in town, and...
According to Mary Prenney, there's a very large growing senior proposition. She's got the problem of trying to get them to the senior center.
Right, right.
I know, I'm aging.
Yeah.
We all are.
In place.
Yeah.
Uh, in my response, when you sent that, I asked about the budget, and basically, what the auditors will do is the audit report, so...
Right.
And I know you did respond...
Yeah, I'm meeting with our accountant on Thursday morning, Thursday morning, he'll be, come in and we'll start the whole process, so, and...
So I guess what I'm looking for is a copy of next year's budget.
Oh, I submitted that December twelfth to the Office of the Town Administration. I can give you guys copies, I have brought extras with me, give me a moment.
Somehow I, I missed it.
You're not alone.
I'd like to get a copy of the audit report when it's available.
Sure.
But if you gave it to Greg, we'll get it a hard copy, uh, electronic copy.
Okay, you sure?
Do you want a hard copy now?
No, electronic copy.
All right, yeah, yeah, no, I submitted that.
I'll go back and look.
Or just submit it again to Greg and have him forward it to us again.
All right, will do.
That'd be great.
And your contracts are up, or soon to be up with Verizon and Comcast?
Uh, yes, that's actually coming up fairly soon, no, and, you know, it's about three or four years away, but that's very quick in contract terms, especially with how we're gonna have to negotiate and the back and forth between the, you know, each cable provider and us and the town, and, um...
But it's not that, the responsibility of our cable committee?
The Cable Advisory Committee? Uh, I believe so. I, uh, haven't heard too much, so, uh, I've, on my own, I've kind of, uh, I've kinda talked to a few people about how they've gone through the whole renegotiating process, and just, they say just start now, get, get going early, uh, look at your contracts, see things that you might have issues with, and...
Bob's point is, is that you, though, that should be doing, or is it Cable Advisory Committee should actually be negotiating?
I believe it's the Cable Advisory Committee, but if no one else is gonna step up and...
Unfortunately, Michael's not here this evening, I know, he's made efforts to reach out...
Right.
...to the cheer.
You know, I just, I figure that if this is coming up, the sooner you get your ducks in a row, and the more organized you are, the easier the whole process will go. This way we can say, hey, look, there's an issue with, you know, this school, you didn't finish doing the work here, or, hey, you know, people on this side of town have a lot of complaints about, you know, just the general dissatisfaction with your service, can you do something about it?
Audio.
Yeah, audio, everything, everything.
Audio continues to be the major issue.
Oh, it's bananas, some, some parts it's too loud, some parts it's too quiet, I don't quite get that, so...
I've never heard the too loud part, unless I've put it up to eighty, and allowed to lower it when I switch channels.
Right. Oddly enough, one of the audio issues was caused by someone, I guess, back last winter, around, yeah, it was around last February, had pulled one of the wires out of the Verizon racks, so Verizon customers were only getting half the audio levels because the little audio fly was missing a whole channel of audio, so, and I, you know, I'd done my best to report it, reported it to the cable providers, reported it to the police, and, yeah, I don't know, I can only do what I can do.
All right. Any questions?
Well, I, I think the takeaway is that we need to get that cable committee, and I, I think you guys, we're gonna get you and the cable committee together and talk about what our objectives are gonna be for...
Plus we have a NORCAMP board.
Yeah.
There is a NORCAMP board.
Yeah.
Right.
Oh, yeah, we're, we're all very interested in trying to get this whole franchise contract renegotiated and get the right things in place.
The board meets on a regular basis, I know that.
Oh, yeah, yep.
Webster from...
No, it's the advisory committee, the issue.
Yeah, yeah, we usually meet that for the...
They're not existing. We're working on that.
All right.
Just be reasonable.
Yeah.
Just one other side issue in relation to your, your physical plan where you are, and the historic district and historic building.
Yeah.
It would certainly be appreciated with a little more cooperation in relation, particularly around the holiday seasons, in relation to, you know, candles on the windows, wreaths on the doors, things like that.
We actually, all right, well, I'll address that one. Our windows to the studio are blacked out, we have darkening, we have boxes basically, so we can't actually get a candle up in that window, and there's six of those like that. Uh, the wreaths on the doors, uh, well, the rear door of the building, if you put a wreath on it or any sort of wreath hanger, the door won't close, neither will the other front doors either, so, we're kinda limited to that, um, yeah, so...
Put a hook in the door.
No, no, I mean, whoa, you have to go through the whole process to get a hook put on that door, you have to go make sure it's aesthetically, you know...
I think we just need a little more, uh, working with the Historical Antiquarian Society. I know that we have some of the space, the town has some of the space in that building.
Correct.
At this point, I believe you're covering the utilities?
Uh, yes, we, uh, cover the electrical, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I mean, I mean, a few candles in the window are not gonna break NORCAMP, right?
No.
In sense-wise?
No, I guess not.
I guess not.
Yeah.
They can get light candles now, too, so...
Yeah, the LED candles now, too, correct.
I know, but, but really, you...
Our issue actually with that, I will say this, is they're left on till like the spring or beyond.
Last year they were on till Easter.
Yeah.
Put 'em on a timer, we, we, we proposed that we would buy timers for the lights.
It costs you more for the timers than the pay for the electricity.
That's beside the point.
Oh.
Why didn't, there are, there are people that, you know, at the end of Christmas, the lights go out, there's no need for them to be on twenty-four seven.
Are the ones in the rest of the building, sit around the, the common area, still on?
Uh, one of them is actually, it's the office that's over the door that nobody's having people...
No, no, not just in that building, I mean, but in the other side, in the other buildings around, whether it be the Potomac House, whether it be...
Potomac House still has them on, I believe.
Whether it be the Potomac House, whether it be, uh, Flip Memorial Hall, you know, so, I mean...
What's so difficult about pulling the plug?
Yeah, I mean...
Yeah, that's why, that's my thing, it's...
You don't have to take the candles away.
And the other thing is they're town-owned properties, you're just letting those, as much as it's just tiny little watts, it's still money, it's still taxpayer money, you know, you shouldn't keep those running all the time, 'cause I expect that, yeah, it's...
But to me, it's not necessarily your decision what we're looking for.
No, I know.
For the people that are, that are doing this and volunteering the services and pay out of their pocket for an awful lot of things.
Right.
If this is what they choose to do, the Historical Antiquarian Society and the historical, and the historical district, we're just looking for a little more cooperation in acquiescing to whether you agree with it or not.
Right.
Whether you agree with it or not.
But there are certain physical restrictions to what we can do for the holidays with regards to closing the doors and putting candles in certain windows that are blacked out.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's probably like four windows we can probably put candles in.
I'm sure next Christmas you're gonna have them then.
Huh?
I'm sure next Christmas you'll have candles in those four windows.
Sure, why not?
They'll go on at eleven o'clock.
Yeah, we'll put 'em on our timers. We actually had timers, 'cause in the past, they were supplying them to us, like, the Historical Antiquarian Society, we'd actually leave a box of window candles, and they didn't this year, so, and we weren't really about to go run out and buy some, not out of, not for anything, but we just had to spend our money on other things.
But if they get provided to you?
Correct, correct.
Would you...
Yeah, that's, that's fair.
Be amenable to, you know, going along with the ambiance of the common area in the historic district.
Yeah, but, see, we were not providing, in the past two years, we did do it. In the past two years, we did put them up, though, I just, they said they went on left force, I didn't put them up, 'cause there was nothing to put up.
And, and again, if we, uh, can work with them as far as wreaths on the door and things like that.
Works both ways. They have to work with us, as we have to work with them.
That's fine, but the thing is...
But that doesn't always happen.
Might not always happen, again, and there may be a disagreement...
Think you can have it all worked up in the next holiday season.
I hope so.
And if there's a disagreement, my, my suggestion is you are in favor of the Historical Antiquarian Society. That's all, because they, they do a fabulous job...
Oh, I know, I, I agree with their mission, we should...
We have five big, five big fish to fry and battles to, to fight.
Right.
So, you know, let's...
Like I said, it goes both ways, Steve. They've got bigger fish to fry than we do in vice versa.
I'm not disagreeing, however, if, if, if we're at a, if we're at a standoff, defer. I'm asking you to defer.
I'm not.
I, I know, but I'm asking you to defer. That's all.
Fair enough, fair enough.
That's all.
You know, I, like I said, I'm not opposed to, like I said, we're all preserving the living history of the town, you know?
And at some point, I hope, at some point, I hope the second floor Rufus Florida mural will become available to the public, because it really is a tremendous asset that the town has.
That's got nothing to do with us.
I know, it has nothing to do with it, but it's part of that building.
Correct.
And then part of the ambiance of our small New England colonial town, and, so let's, in the spirit of cooperation...
Sure.
You know, appreciate it.
Sure, of course.
All right.
We hadn't seen you budget, but can you refresh my memory, what are you receiving fees on an annual basis from both Comcast and Verizon?
Uh, I believe Verizon is five percent of their annual fees, and Comcast is four-point-two-five percent. This past year was a little bit over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
From each?
No, no, total, total, correct.
Total.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's not a huge budget, um, yeah, but it's enough, I mean, we don't, we stay out of the red, so, as long as we remain in the black, and the lights stay on, and we can still provide what we provide to the town...
What lights are you talking about now? Oh, no, different ones.
Yeah, yeah, studio lights, studio lights.
Don't go back there.
Yeah, yeah, no, got some nice speakers in the ceiling.
Yeah.
Yep, but, yeah, any further questions right then, or?
So you're just gonna follow that electronically to Greg and Paul, that'd be great.
Yep, absolutely.
And that includes your capital plan?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we don't really have a distinct capital plan, but I could put something together, sure, 'cause I know we have right now, uh, we have a plan to relocate some of the cable casting equipment to the tavern, so, since they're moving stuff from the old high school to the new building this spring, we looked to actually, uh, pull the cable casting equipment over to the tavern, so, it should actually be with the playback equipment, it makes more sense. Right now, half the reason why we have some of these issues is because of how the signal leaves here, goes to high school, bounces back, goes around town, we just want a more direct, goes from point A to point B to the cable provider.
And who's, who's overseeing the termination of the I, the moving and termination of the INET?
As far as I know, uh, with regards to moving the actual INET part, uh, I've seen Gene Toreg there at the meetings, whoever's responsible for the technology portion of the building, and then the school department, I believe, is, uh, sort of spearheading that, we're just trying to get the cable cast stuff over to the studio, so, again, it just makes a lot more sense, and it reduces some of the...
I didn't know Gene had involvement there.
Well, I've seen him at the meetings, we've had meetings discussing, you know, timetables and stuff, so, Patrick Daly was the main proponent for it, um, and, yeah, I'm trying to think of the gentleman's name on the, that's actually working for, Gilbane, or whoever the builder is for...
Jeff Whitten, or is it, oh, Jeff's the PMA, but Joanna?
I think so, I don't know, I haven't had too much involvement in that, no.
Maybe some other person that's...
You've just been trying, I, I try to stay abreast as best I can, so, but...
But you're in the loop over there.
Uh, yeah, yeah, whenever there's an issue that pops up, I get an email saying, hey, we have a question on this, so, um, yeah, we, uh, but, yeah, we're trying to sort of coordinate, it's a big project, it's, it, that's gonna be a very big project, and what we can do on our end to, I guess, lessen the load on that end by relocating the stuff to us, we're gonna do it, so...
The INET, the INET is the data connection between the buildings, and therefore, you know, it's gonna be broken, and it's gonna be put back up, and the high school currently is the D-mark for this whole thing, so...
Correct.
When that's shut down, right, the INET is dead.
I thought it was all moving to the new high school.
Correct, the INET data portion, we're actually trying to take care of the broadcast portion out of that equation, and it'll simplify things a lot, it'll also clarify some of the issues we have with transmitting our signal, so, 'cause we do have issues. Right now, currently, we have to send our signal back to the INET hub, it goes through Comcast equipment, and some point in the whole processing of that signal, a feed goes to the Verizon equipment, now what comes out of Comcast equipment doesn't quite match up with what the Verizon equipment needs, both signal strength and whatnot. Um, what we're proposing to do is instead of using the old RF technology, we're actually gonna use a video-over-IP, in other words, you're gonna use the actual public internet using fiber optics to beam from point A to point B. Uh, we can set something up at the school, we can set something up here, and it's, as long as you have a, you know, you plug into, say, a network, you can transmit back to the station from one of these devices, and therefore you don't need that big rack of equipment that sits in the middle of the INET hub. Also, instead of our signal going all around through the INET, back to the hub, getting processed, being split, going to Verizon, causing all these issues, everything would come back to our playback area, the equipment would feed two of the exact same matching signals of the same matching impedance, so, nothing's overdriving or not giving enough signal strength to the equipment, everything's even-steven, it just goes out, and we'd be directly connected from Twenty-One Bow Street to South Lawrence and to the Burlington headends of both Comcast and Verizon respectively, so, it's, uh, and then, when you think about it, if we take care of that end of it, that's less stuff that has to be tacked on to the new high school project, 'cause we'll be actually taking that equipment out of the equation. And also, the turnaround time of moving that whole INET equipment will also be a lot less, because you're not worrying about audio, video, and data, you're just worrying about the data portion going up the hill, AV stuff just winds up coming back to the tavern, and then just straight out, so, my hope is that it clears up a lot of the signal issues, that maybe with some of these volume issues people are having, whether it's too quiet or too loud, you know, 'cause one guy adjusts it one way at their head end, and it's too loud, and then I call, complain, and then he adjusts it again, and it's too quiet, and it's just, put that, put that to rest, you know?
Really?
So, yeah, so that's what we're working on, if, uh, you have any questions, or you can always reach me, so, yeah, very much. You're very welcome, thank you.
Terminated.
Yep, yep, drive safe, stay warm.
We have a minute?
Probably wait a couple minutes and...
You wanna wait for everything else?
What else do we have?
Yeah, a minute, the fact that we wait isn't a big difference.
All right. Yeah, okay.
Is there an appointment?
I think there's officially disabilities. I think it came in, I think I got an email, Michael's the liaison, I think he sent me an email, should I keep putting on?
Do you have a motion, this is for Norma Pierce?
Yes, that's it.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination, the following name for reappointment, is a member of the Commission on Disabilities, for a term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen, we have four openings and one name. Norma Pierce, for Caroline Road, and she's an incumbent.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
A second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we can just continue the other two items, which are the minutes in the legal bills, until our next meeting?
All right.
We've already, item number seven, we've taken care of on Saturday.
Correct.
Everyone signed off on the, everyone gave their approval and comments on the [inaudible].
Yes, so, just, probably mostly because Steve's going to take a copy, you, tentatively, March thirteenth, there'll be a meeting of the Steering Committee with either Mr. Kobayashi or...
Akati?
Yeah, what's his first name?
Mary.
Mary, to go through the resumes and determine which ones would be invited into for interviews, and at which point then, schedule will be set up.
So, is that, when's the job opening, the poster, has it, has it already done?
It's already, the, it's on the website.
On the website?
Yeah, the TA profile's on the website, I don't know if Bob's got a copy of it or not, probably not.
No.
We could get...
Do we have the final, that was the final version?
Yes, right.
But there are any changes, I know Steve had some comments, I don't know if they did.
I did get them from Steve, so...
All right. Very good, okay.
So, we could get Bob a copy.
We'll have Bob a copy, sure.
Okay.
Great, all right, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to approve legal bills for December two thousand and thirteen in the amount of nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents as follows. Copelman and Page, PC General, two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents, Copelman and Page, PC Labor, six thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars, total nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents.
We have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
You have a second, any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All the new business, Mr. O'Leary?
I was informed yesterday of the unfortunate news of the passing of a tremendous public servant in our community called Kobayashi.
Oh.
Oh, I hadn't heard that.
I heard that he passed away, and...
We would have called for a member of ours out.
And, close is well-known throughout the community, and served this community extremely well, from dating back to the nineteen-sixties, as a member of the Board of Public Works, when it was elected prior to the, prior to the charter, and served as a distinguished member of this board, served as moderator for a long period of time, involved in a lot of community activities and volunteerism, not just here, but also outside of North Reading, and going to be sadly missed, so, you know, heartfelt condolences to Bridget and her family, and close, I mean, I've known him for the better part of forty-some odd years.
Yeah, he's resp, he was responsible for getting on the Finance Committee and...
Oh, so he's responsible for that.
YMCA board.
Right.
He was on the board up until a couple years ago.
Yep.
Resigned.
But a, a real gentleman, I mean, he served distinguishedly on all the local boards, and, I mean, I knew him personally, I knew him politically, he was of the same persuasion as myself, as opposed to Mr. Maseri down there, from the democratic standpoint, so from a partisan standpoint, I went to a lot of conventions with the, with the gentleman, and I think he supported more successful candidates than I did over the years, but, you know, but we had our differences of opinion on some of the candidates, he was always a gentleman about it, and even in the past, you know, we competed for the same offices at times, where he ran against me, and I ran against him, but he was always very gentlemanly, and we remained fast friends all these years, so, honestly, North Reading has lost a true public servant, and it's, it's untimely, it's unfortunate, but he's at peace now, and again, to Bridget and her family.
So, when did you hear this?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, so, they had a service, or?
No, I think the services are going to be Thursday and Friday.
Thursday and Friday.
Thursday and Friday, yeah.
Do you know where?
At Crosswells.
Crosswells.
Yeah, at Crosswells, but a great guy, and, and again, dogged campaigner, I mean, he wore out more shoe leather than anybody I know, going out and, you know, expounding upon his favorite issues and trying to become a voice for a lot of people, and he did an exemplary job, and we could all, if we could, you know, use him as a, as an example as